Mayor Lamson.
Here. All right, silent prayer and flag salute.
Mayor Lamson, would you like to...
Oh, is there anything to report from our closed session? Sorry.
The council convened in closed session on one item noted on the agenda for a conference with legal counsel, there's no reportable action.
Thank you, Ms. Hood.
Councilmember Lozano, will you lead us in the flag salute after the silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you replay the statement, please?
This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, October 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Donna. Are there any agenda approval additions and/or deletions? Okay, we have a presentation by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, Mr. James Corliss.
I'd first like to, I think Public Works Director Seling is going to introduce James, but I just want to make a comment real quick. Since I've been on the council, not quite a year, I've been also a member of the SACOG Board, in which James, Mr. Corliss, is the executive director. And we talk about at council meetings, you know, lots of things, including transportation funds and things like that that come to the city for our citizens. And James is the person at the head of that, who tries to wrangle in, I think, 28 different jurisdictions throughout six county region and get us to consensus and things like that so that we can better suit the transportation needs for the entire region. I just want to make a note that on October 30th, we are going to have a closed session, I'm sorry, a regional, unmet regional transportation needs meeting here in the chambers that I'll be chairing and definitely want the public to come and be a part of that. So, Director Seling?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to give a quick overview of SACOG and hopefully I don't steal too much of Mr. Corliss's thunder here, but for those, just general information, the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, what we refer to as SACOG, is an association of local governments in the six county region, as councilmember noted, with 22 cities and six counties, so 28 members, and El Dorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba. SACOG provides transportation planning and funding for the region and serves as a forum for the study and resolution of regional issues. In addition to preparing the region's long-range transportation plan, SACOG approves the distribution of affordable housing in the region and assists in the planning of transit, bicycles, networks, clean air, and airport land uses. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Corliss. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Lamson, councilmembers, Councilmember Lozano. It's important that I and other staff at SACOG get around the region and give you updates from time to time, so you know what's happening. There's a lot happening right now. And so I'm going to walk through a couple of slides, starting really with the adoption of our regional six-county transportation plan that we are actually looking to adopt at the end of November. I'm going to tell you a little bit about that. I will, I'm going to slide in here, and I know Councilmember Lozano is also in the Sacramento Transportation Authority, but the development and the potential to have a sales tax measure countywide for transportation next fall is critical. This is the moment at which an expansion plan will be developed and research and polling and everything else. So when we think about funding coming to the region, we think about funding coming to Galt for your critical transportation projects. With the plan, the sales tax next year, we have a lot of competitive statewide transportation pots of money next year that we're going to, as a region, have to compete for.
I just suffer down 99 and you suffer along I-5 all the time. Those are critical corridors that we need to make sure we compete statewide, and that'll be a theme I'm going to try to give you in the next few minutes, which is, I frankly think we've got to be more competitive, we've got to be more competitive at a state level, and we've got to make our presence known in the state capitol as a region, as a six-county region, because we're just not there yet in terms of our ability to have influence. So, where I should point this. There we go. So I mentioned, and the acronym MTPSES is our 20-year transportation plan, and the SES stands for Sustainable Community Strategy. We are, we've been working on this now for about two and a half years. This is really the roadmap for the region in terms of growth, housing, jobs, infrastructure, transportation investments. And there's four key themes that really emerge from this plan, and they probably won't be a huge surprise to you, but they are actually very important themes in terms of the future of our region. Number one is really about smart growth in vibrant places, and I want to emphasize this first before I even lead with transportation, because frankly, if we don't grow in a phased way, if we don't get smart about... way, if we don't get smart about phasing growth and infrastructure, we're going to choke on our success. And if we don't build the kind of places and the kinds of vibrant places that people want to move to, stay in, settle down in, raise a family in, we're very interested actually increasingly in our connection to the Bay Area as a 26-county mega-region. Not only do we want to have a great place for families that are already here, but we want to be an affordable place for a lot of the folks that are getting priced out, and we want to attract more jobs and more companies. And we do that largely these days through really building wonderful vibrant communities that have everything to offer, that are complete communities, that are walkable, that are family-friendly, and that preserve a quality of life. I just want to show a couple of slides here, because we think about growth in this region, and we're a fast-growing region, our growth rates are faster than California and the U.S. average, although I'll show you some slides in a second that are a little bit below average on housing production. We've also got to think about a lot of our suburban areas, and rethinking and redeveloping a lot of our, especially retail. Retail, the face of retail, is going to change dramatically, it already is, the next 10 to 15 years. This is just an aerial shot of a very famous mall in Denver, Colorado, called the Villa Italia. It was the biggest, most successful mall in the Denver region in the 1960s, and about 10 years ago, it completely closed. It went completely vacant. And this was in Lakewood, it was a suburb of Denver, just outside, actually just on the light rail network in Denver, Colorado. And so Lakewood, the city of Lakewood, had a challenge in front of it, which is, what do we do with this vacant mall? It never had a downtown, because it wasn't developed back in the 19th century, when you had kind of beautiful main streets like you have here in Galt. This is what that mall looks like today. They spent about five years reimagining this, they put the street network back into the one-mile-by-one-mile super block, and they built one of the coolest, hippest, sort of suburban-urban, walkable centers with shops and housing above. So I tell you this, because we have a lot of malls, we have a lot of commercial retail, we have a lot of old arterial corridors with shops and stores, many of those are good, and our local businesses are willing to support those, but whether or not, and where they begin to transition, we need to think about, how do we reimagine those corridors, working with neighborhoods and working with the public. But this is being reimagined as we speak. Again, this is one of the cooler, hipper places now in the suburbs of Denver to go. We have to think about how we're paying for transportation infrastructure, and I'm a transportation advocate, I think we absolutely have to invest in transportation, but I'm also here to tell you through this plan, that our aspirations and our desires to build everything we say we want to build, we can't afford. The price tag is too much, and so we've got to get smarter, we've got to use technology, we've got to think about how we're paying for this. In the future, we're going to have to also think, as we go to hybrids and electric vehicles, as we accelerate adoption of hybrids and electric vehicles, we pay less and less gas tax. That's a, that is, so that is a short-term solution, a gasoline tax. We've got to think smarter about how we pay for it, and we want to actually develop a pilot program here in the region that would actually imagine getting rid of a gas tax, and thinking about what comes next. And what comes next is probably more along the lines of a user fee, like, think of transportation like a utility, that you would pay for what you consume, maybe you pay at different times of the day, and you use that revenue to build a smarter transportation system. Uh-oh, okay, good. We have some HOV lanes around the region, it's a patchwork quilt, they're disconnected, they stop, they start. If you tried to ride US 50 from Folsom to downtown Sacramento, good luck. Finding the HOV lane is like playing Pokemon Go, you don't know where it is, or where... We need a connected network of HOV lanes, we want to then actually make, turn into express lanes. That means that you can ride for free as a two, three-person carpool, that the bus networks can actually get zip along a continuous express lane, but if you're by yourself, and you're running late, you've got to pick your kid up from childcare, and you've got to pay a penalty if you don't get there on time, you can pay in with a toll tag, with a fast track. We're starting to see these in the Bay Area, we can, we think we can jump on the technology in the Bay Area, and we can complete this network across the six-county region of express lanes, and the toll that you pay in the express lane will actually help to construct and operate the toll lane itself. We know that it's really important, whether we have kids, and I have three teenagers, that I'm driving around all the time, and I'm sick of it, I don't want to drive my kids anymore, or we have elderly parents who are living longer, who no longer really want to be behind the wheel of a car, and actually, it's unsafe for them to drive. We've got to think about how we provide transportation and mobility options, and while I really love the fact that we have a light rail system here, and we have some important bus routes, I just made a presentation to Yolo County Transit Board last night, the future of mass transit is not like the past, we have to get smarter. This is a really interesting experiment in West Sacramento called VIA, it's actually a private provider, a private sector mobility provider has come in, it's underwritten in part by the city of West Sacramento, $2.50, it works on your phone, point-to-point, door-to-door. In an age of Uber and Lyft and disruption, which is why the private automobile is so successful, is it goes point-to-point, goes from where you want to go to where you want to go, where you are, where you want to go. VIA is point-to-point, door-to-door. 13 and up, as the father of a 14, 13-year-old, I wish I had VIA where I live. Teenagers are taking it, we have stories of grandparents and elderly folks who are basically saying, "I can go buy ice cream for the first time, because I used to take three buses and come home, and it would melt, but now I can go door-to-door, I can get my ice cream home and eat my ice cream for the first time." It's about mobility, accessibility, and it's a smart way to provide some of this. Now, it costs per ride, it's going to cost more than a fixed route bus, so we've got to be thoughtful about where we use it and how we use it, but it is harder and harder to make a 30, 60-minute headway bus work in a lot of our smaller communities, it's hard to get that ridership, and across the country, transit ridership is dropping, we've got to pay attention to that, and we've got to be thoughtful about how we provide that next generation of transportation solutions. And finally, last but not least, we are not doing a great job of maintaining what we already have. Potholes, road condition, our light rail system is, actually dates to 1987, the trains themselves date to 1987, it's not a good way to run a light rail system or a railroad. Here's where we were as a region, our road quality in 2008, this is a real curve that really exists for all the public works folks here, you know this curve, you want to be in the good or the at-risk, you don't want to fall down this curve, because it costs a lot more to get back up once you fall down. But here's where we are 10 years later, we're falling down the curve, and first and foremost, number one priority is we got to take care of what we have. This is a hard-to-read timeline, just in terms of our transportation plan, we are looking at actually accelerating adoption of our regional plan, as Councilmember Lozano knows, in late November, we were going to adopt in February, because if you heard, we've had a little skirmish with the Trump administration federally, and they're threatening to withhold some of our transportation dollars over air quality, and we are actually trying to get in right under the deadline of some of these new federal rules that are coming down. It's a long story, but all I can tell you is, we've got to try to get this done and adopted by the end of, at the end of November, or else we may actually run into some sanctions federally, and some of our federal transportation funds may get frozen. I promise you I'll have good news in a second, just wait. And here you go, here's RENA. So we don't, as you've been told, we do transportation, but we also do growth, and we do regional housing needs allocation. Obviously, the private sector builds housing, you plan for housing, we get a number from the state that says, here's how many housing units we think we need in the next eight years to accommodate our population growth, we distribute that out, it is now circulating, we are looking for comments on that, our board needs to adopt a methodology in November. I will tell you, this is different a little bit in this cycle, because for this regional housing needs allocation cycle, RENA, there is actually funding attached to this for the first time. You have local housing planning funds that are coming to you, we have a regional pot that's coming to us, and we are trying like heck to get more money from the state to actually help us not just plan for housing, but actually build housing, actually help with the infrastructure to make housing more prevalent, more attainable, accessible, affordable, you name it. But here's the numbers again, I said we're growing faster than the U.S., that's over about a 15-year period, but the last five years have not been good. So this is the number of housing starts across our six-county region, and you can see all the way back to 1999, we had boom years in the early 2000s, we hit the Great Recession, and I don't have to tell you this, because you know it, we hit the Great Recession harder than just about any other mid-sized metropolitan region in the country, and we've recovered slower. That means fewer housing starts, that purple bar there, very low, is our average five-year housing construction, six-county-wide, region-wide. We have got to be up at that yellow bar on average for the next 20 years, that's what we need to produce, to be able to house our population and keep growing, and we are, we have a big gap. That gap is coming back to get us right now in terms of affordability, in terms of cost, so we've got to increase production. And this is just a little bit about how that works between the state of California, the number comes down, the RENA number comes down to the council of governments, every... I tell you, we are for a very large region council of governments, we're one of the few in the country that has every single local jurisdiction at that table, most cycle through and appoint different cities and counties, so for a region our size, 22nd largest metropolitan region in the country, we're one of the few that actually has every single city and county at that table twice a month, that's a benefit, we want to try and take advantage of that as much we can. I mentioned a little bit about the future of mass transit and mobility, and you saw that van that goes point-to-point and door-to-door. I am convinced that in the Silicon Valley, so close to us, especially so close to you here, there's a lot about the tech that is being incubated in the Silicon Valley that we could be the testbed for here. And that mobility option is a great example of, I think, what we could do to begin testing innovative, creative solutions, and working more in public-private partnerships. So we've run a program called Civic Lab, we've run it for two years, where we actually put a challenge out, the first year we did transportation, the second year we've actually done revitalizing these older retail corridors. First year, actually across all two years, I guess we've had 20 teams, we've had 70 partners. This was the first, this is a little map region-wide of a lot of our transportation projects, the notion is, don't come to us with a solution, but come with a challenge, the problem you're trying to solve, and then we will put some money aside, we do an umbrella procurement, we do an RFP for private sector vendors to come in, like that VIA microtransit, and we match our cities and counties and transit districts to the private provider, we underwrite some of that with some public funding, and then we go off and running, and a lot of our local cities and counties then run a pilot program, we have UC Davis, Sac State looking at evaluation of this. It's been really cool, it's been incredibly successful and exciting, I think we put ourselves on the map of a lot of private sector mobility providers that are mostly just thinking San Francisco, New York, LA, Chicago, we're trying to make our region known, and we're trying to raise our profile. We had one of the first autonomous vehicle, Ollie Shuttle, experiments and pilots at the Sac State campus, it's now actually in the Rancho Cordova Business Park, state law prohibits right now autonomous vehicles from running on California roads, but we can in a setting like Sac State and Rancho Cordova, we can run those shuttles and experiment with those, because we think it's really the future of first-last mile, and getting people from, on shorter trips. Second year of Civic Lab, as I mentioned, we've done these old retail commercial corridors, we have this really nice grouping of teams from all across the region, 13 teams across five counties, all re-envisioning these older retail corridors where some of those, that retail's beginning to fail, we've matched those now with private sector developers, we have, we just had 57 vendors come in and respond to our RFP, and from outside California as well as inside California, so again, we're trying to get folks to notice. Just to wrap up a few last slides, I mentioned our profile in the state capitol, we are trying to get the state of California to invest in our region and provide us a pilot program and some real money on the table to experiment with infill housing, electric vehicle deployment, and those kinds of innovative mobility options. We're going to the state for 100 million a year for four years, it's a big ask, but that's what we call Green Means Go, to help reach our greenhouse gas reduction target, we have a very stringent target we have to meet to reduce carbon emissions, we are not the Bay Area, we're not LA, we don't have a mass transit system like they do, so we've got to get smarter and more creative and more innovative. So this is big ask, in fact, your senator down here is going to be really important, Senator Galdiani, is going to be very important in terms of that effort in the legislature. A few last things, because we're a council of governments, we do also more than just transportation and housing, which I know you all have, a youth commission here in Galt, we've run a regional youth leadership academy, we just did our first inaugural year, applications are open for a second year, and it is, I'm sure as you know, doing this day-to-day, it's just remarkable when we get young high school students in and talk to them about the future of the region, civics, urban planning, transportation, land use, housing, they've made some really, really great projects, they've gotten a lot out of it, we connect them and have members of Congress come talk to them, it's just fantastic, so we'd love to get some applications from Galt. And finally, as Councilmember Lozano mentioned, we're trying to do an annual event where we pull all of the regions elected together, this is October 30th this year, there it is, October 30th, it'll be at the center at 2300, which is in Sacramento County, just outside downtown, and the focus this year is entirely transportation. We're going to have folks come in from around the nation, talking about sales tax measures, talking about the future of mobility, it's going to be really exciting, we've got some great speakers, 9:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m., we'd love to see you there, we'd love to see the city council senior staff, we'd love to have you. So with that, I hope that's a helpful run-through of what's happening at the regional level and the council of governments, and again, we're thrilled to have Councilmember Lozano in Galt at the table, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Corliss, that was very informative. Does he have any questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
I just have just one comment, again, thank you for coming down here to our city and explaining SACOG to not only the city, but the citizens who watch, really appreciate you taking the time to do that. The, a few of the council members met with Assemblyman Cooper about two weeks ago for city stuff down at the capitol, and we were certain to mention Green Means Go for this year, and he assured us that he supported it last year and would continue to do that. So we are reaching out at least to Assemblyman Cooper, and certainly the senator as well, Galdiani.
That's great, and I'm sure you know he's, as I mentioned, the senator, but Assemblyman Cooper is very, very important in terms of his position in the legislature, so thanks for mentioning that.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you, any, no, thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Thank you.
All right, public comments, will you read the statement?
Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the agenda will be given an opportunity to do so at the time that item is being considered.
Thank you. First up, I'd like to call Barbara Payne and the Community Character Coalition.
Come on, you guys. Don't leave me up here by myself.
We can have him stand right here if you want.
Yeah, you guys, you get to stand over there. You don't want to, huh? While they're gathering up here, let me say, it's a real pleasure, we've been here for about 12 years, coming before you, and bragging and recognizing some of our citizens that have set examples of good character traits, and I know as council members, it makes you proud to know that you're representing people like this in our community. So I'm going to ask Mary Martinez to announce our nominees for pride and community. Also, I'd like to mention that Mary writes those wonderful articles for the Galt Herald describing what pride in the community actually means today, and some of the other character traits. She does a really good job, and I'm happy to have her make the presentations.
Okay, tonight, we are recognizing those selected as role models of pride and community, and our first winner is Bonnie Rodriguez. Bonnie, if you could come up? Bonnie Rodriguez is a true role model of pride and community for her obvious pride and relentless dedication to our community. When others step back, she steps up. She faces issues head-on after doing her homework, her research. More than that, even if she disagrees with someone... More than that, even if she disagrees with someone, she never forgets to show respect. She frequently puts into action her pride in community by volunteering her time and energy for nearly every event to uplift our community. Bonnie Rodriguez also takes pride in seeing positive outcomes result through collaboration with not only the citizens, but businesses and our city leaders. Bonnie is well-known for her integrity and for being open to learning and understanding areas of concerns. She will spend countless hours researching and seeking out solutions or ideas for the benefit of our community. Bonnie's relentless efforts take place, for the most part, in her role as a concerned Galt citizen. In addition, Bonnie Rodriguez is raising a son, watching her daughter fulfill her dreams, running a newspaper, and filling the role of chamber president. Bonnie Rodriguez is an exceptional person who lives and demonstrates pride in her community every day. And Bonnie was nominated by Karen Everett Watson and Ralph Cortez.
Congratulations.
Our second Pride and Community winner is Terry Esparsa. Terry, if you would come forward. Terry Esparsa, also known as Grandma Cop, demonstrates pride in our community on a daily basis. She is respected by her peers and all those she comes in contact with as a CAPS volunteer with the Galt Police Department since 2013. Terry takes responsibility seriously as she organizes school events, including daily meet and greet with children as they arrive at school. She always meets them with a smile and makes sure they leave her in a better mood for their day at school. She is honest to a fault. Her integrity is of the highest. She is compassionate in her actions, and everyone she touches knows she genuinely cares. Those that she has come in contact with as Grandma Cop still say, "Hi, Grandma Cop," and give her a hug, even after they have moved on to high school or have even graduated. Terry Esparsa is an exceptional role model, a woman of gentleness and compassion, and a dynamic member of our local community. Her ongoing enthusiasm, love, and concern for the students of our campuses and community are outstanding and a blessing to all who know her. Terry Esparsa does not work or serve for awards or accolades, but simply to inspire and influence everyone on our campus and in our community that she interacts with each day. She has mastered that elusive art of helping our students feel safe, safe enough to be themselves without judgment, while also encouraging them to respect and care for others. Terry demonstrates care for each and every child and freely offers love, acceptance, and grace to all. Terry Esparsa has made a positive impact on so many young lives in Galt and instilled the lasting value of pride in their community. Congratulations, Terry. And Terry was nominated by Jerry Brumfield and Judy Hayes, principal at Lake Canyon.
Terry, I just want to say I love when I see you out in public. There's no way to explain it except that you have a light, and that just shines and makes everyone around you feel welcome and blessed.
All right, next up, we have Robert Crowdey on the Galt Market Master Plan.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Robert Crowdey. I have lived in the city of Galt for the last 41 years, and I'm now representing now over 78 citizens of Galt, calling ourselves Concerned Citizens of Galt. And that group is growing by the day. I have just five questions, and I'm hoping that I can get the answers tonight from staff or council and maybe not have the city clerk charge me for the time of those answers and comments they make back. At the Wednesday, October 9th meeting, 2019, Parks and Recreation Commission, staff was introduced to a group called Williams Plus Patent Architects and Planners as the firm they hired to complete the Galt Market Master Plan using a $120,000 grant. And this was the first time I have heard about this firm. I truly believed, and many people in the community believed, that Lewis Acquisitions Firm was hired to complete the plan. So my first question is, did the city introduce Williams Plus Patent Architects and Planners at the public meeting, at any Galt public meeting, as the firm hired to complete the Galt Market Master Plan? And did the city go out for a bid to complete this plan? Is there anyone that can answer that question on staff or council?
It's, if it's not on the agenda, it's not our policy to address the issues if they're not on the agenda.
And I'll just ask the questions and leave you with my questions after I'm finished then. Question number two, Jed Elmore, who was working for the architect firm, I should say actually Lewis Acquisition Company, was he at the meeting with the staff that I was told about at the last commissions meeting, when you met with the state Assemblyman Jim Cooper's staff in regards to possibly changing the assembly bill or the quick claim deed? So was he present at that meeting with staff too? So I guess I can't get that answer either. I was also trying to find out if any of the council members had met with state Assemblyman Jim Cooper in regards to changing the assembly bill or quick claim deed? If that can be maybe answered sometime in a later date. I'm also asking this following question to three council members, and again, I guess they can't answer. I hope they were able to answer this question. If you could, would you be willing to sell the sports complex and have it removed from the Fairgrounds property as part of the Galt Market Master Plan? I truly believe the community needs to know this information so they can better make judgments on what they feel about the plan in the future, since the next meeting will be held at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon in November. Since the city's main purpose of the Galt Market Master Plan is to better utilize the Fairgrounds property in order to bring in more revenue for the city of Galt, I had two-part questions. How much revenue is generated per year by the city of Galt from all the Fairgrounds property excluding the Galt Market? It's important for council to be aware of that information to make a better judgment on what you should do or should not do with the property. You don't just look at the Fairgrounds property as the Galt Market. There's a lot of revenue generated on all of the Fairgrounds property. And I'm sure the finance director has that information available for you since they're going through an audit right now. And the last question is, how much sales tax revenue is returned to the city of Galt from the state of California for all the retail businesses and restaurants that are located on the Galt Shopping Center property? Since one of the ideas is to build retail and restaurants on this property and to, to make at least the same amount of revenue that the Galt Market generates more, if you can't even generate the amount of money that the sales tax brings in from all those businesses, that means Denny's, Old Ravioli, the Chinese food restaurant, we talked about shopping, the shopping market over there, Say Mart, we're talking about Taco Bell.
Mr. Crowdey, you have 30 seconds to wrap it up, please.
I'm, I'm just hoping that we could get these answers answered in time before the November meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. I'll leave these questions with you. And I'd also like to thank Donna Settles, the city clerk, for her long service in the city of Galt. I had the opportunity to work with her professionally for eight years on the city council and as mayor. And I can only tell you that she has been accurate, to-the-point, professional. And I know I've done a lot of public requests for information over the years, and I'm sure that's made her lose a little bit of hair possibly. But I, I want the, the community to know, as well as her to know, how much I appreciated her service for our community over the years she's been here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowdey.
So can I direct the city manager to kind of address these and then maybe get a memo back to council, and we can present that?
May I have a comment?
Certainly.
First of all, I would like to thank you, Mr. Crowdey, to come here to give some information. As you know, the question you have, we certainly be transparent, we will get back to you, give you all the answers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Jean Davenport on rezoning.
I'm Jean Davenport. I live in the city of Galt. Those are really good questions that the last gentleman asked, and I'd ask that if you're going to answer those, you put them on the, on the city webpage, the questions and your answers, so we can look into that, excuse me, look at that, because I think they were really good pertinent questions that need to be answered. Along those lines, it's kind of academic at this point with the rezoning at Walnut and Carillion. You rezone it from office to, you put in homes, you put in 16 houses. That's not going to do a thing to the general budget. It's just going to change the entire aesthetics of that general plan, the map that we put out for that. There was a lot of work done for that last general plan. Kurt, you were, you were part of the process and the things that we put together for that. When you let developers come in, you have a developer coming in wanting to buy city land in this, in this little cul-de-sac here and do a development, but we have all these open spaces that we have a general plan to address, and you, and nothing said or done to that. I mean, we have, we have lots that are totally empty, that are for parks, for businesses and whatnot, and we don't drive anybody to those places. And we've got to stop putting houses in, in the designated areas that were for businesses, office space, regardless if they've been empty for 10 years, they've been empty for 30 years, for crying out loud. You know? So don't say that putting 16 houses is going to change the, you know, the outlook of this community. The CACOG on the design, this is, they hit on the infill, but they also hit on the rooftops. I know you guys have been approached by a developer to take some land in to the north side of Twin Cities for houses. I, I know that some developers have approached some of you, if not all of you. The bottom line is, you've already extended the city council for one development, I mean, the city limits for one development, and I understand as we grow that we might need to address those limits and what we have to do. But to change something in the center of town and start taking away from what the general design was for, I think is disingenuous to the taxpayers' base. You put in 16 houses, and literally it's going to change the entire aesthetic of that community. And I would like, in the future, if you're going to have, if somebody's going to approach the city about rezonings, an area that Chris would let me know so I can look into it and address it. You can laugh, but I'm dead serious. But, you know, the bottom line is, we care about our city, and we know we live, we all went through a recession together. We all have given up things. I mean, everything's been cut back city-wise, so, you know, like, we get street sweepby now once a month probably, but that, where they're building those houses, I've seen our city's street sweepper over there three, three times a week. You know, that's not to say we don't need that, you know, to keep the place clean. What I'm getting at is you've got 16 houses. What is that going to do for us in the long run? What's that going to do for that area? You know, honestly, I'd like to know, because in my estimation, it's going to do nothing to help this city get to a place where it needs to be for the general fund to support everything that we want to do. Because we're cutting back constantly. We went from five days a week to four days a week. We've never gone back to five days a week. And honestly, we're never going back to five-day-a-week work for the city. I know you guys work in your offices, but you're not available to the general public five days a week. And I, I've gotten used to that, and I'm not so cranky about it anymore, but the fact of the matter is, these things, you, you change our community when you do things like this. That was, that plan was going to be really good for this city, what it was planned for. I mean, for a little park walking area, businesses, things like that. On the, on the other side, I don't know what was really planned for it, but going forward, we need to take into consideration how it affects us as a city and what we're doing. CACOG, I love those express lanes. I got from Oracle Park, I got home in like two and a half hours because I got into an express lane. Cost me 12 bucks, but it was worth it. It, you know, with stuff like that is really good. But we need to stop taking away from what we have planned. We've had this general-
Mr. Davenport, you have 30 seconds to wrap it up.
Well, I'll say nice things about you, and we'll go over. Okay?
I noticed it, yeah.
So, but I'll get to that in 20 seconds. No, I just, you know, I would just like you guys to consider that, because I don't want to see that Walnut Strip turn into houses. I, I think it would be detrimental to what we're trying to do as a city. Thanks for your time, and I, I like you too, very much, Mr. Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport. You kept saying 16. Did you mean 60? You kept saying 16 houses. Did you mean 60?
60.
There's 60.
60 houses.
6-0.
Okay, then I misspoke. Thank you for correcting me.
Okay, sorry.
60 houses, worse than 16.
Anyway, thank you. All right. We have the information, okay, sorry, reports by councilmembers on regional boards, commissions, and committees. Councilmember Sandu, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Campion?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Lozano?
Nothing.
And I don't think I have any either. All right, information consent calendar. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes as submitted, receive and file warrants for the period ending October 2nd, 2019, adopt a resolution, one, supporting the county of Sacramento's application proposal for the Department of Water Resources for a Proposition 68 Sustainable Groundwater Management Program Grant, two, supporting the county of Sacramento to serve as the administering entity for the grant application, and three, authorizing the city manager to sign and submit the letter of support and provide a copy of the resolution and process any other related documents as necessary for the grant application.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Campion, seconded by Councilmember Sandu. Roll call vote, please. Councilmember Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Lamson? Yes. Motion passes 4-0. Are there any scheduled matters? No, none tonight. And any, let's see, regular calendar, city attorney's office, the subject elected city clerk vacancy, consider the applications and appointment of city clerk. Ms. Hood?
Yes, good evening, mayor and city council. So you'll recall from the September meeting that we reviewed the options for filling the vacancy with Ms. Settles' resignation from the elected city clerk position. The council had two options, to set a special election or fill it by appointment. The council opted for the appointment option. The city clerk's office advertised for applicants for that position and allowed applications through October 3rd. The city clerk's office received two applications, one from Christina, also better known as Tina Hubert, and Kathy Tellier. Both applicants meet the qualifications for the position of an elected city clerk, which is that you are a resident of the city of Galt and also a registered voter. The applications are in the packet and have been provided to the council and available to the public to review. The city council has discretion to determine how you want to review the applications in the appointment process. You can do that this evening. We have agendized it so that you may, if there is any public comment, take public comment, review the question, the applications. If there are questions that you'd like to ask, we can address those, and if the council's so inclined, can make a motion to appoint. I would note that Ms. Tellier did reach out to Ms. Settles and let her know that she was out of town, so she's not available to be here this evening through next week. Ms. Hubert is here. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
No questions as Ms. No questions, does Ms. Hubert want to make a public comment?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. First of all, I'd like to thank you for considering my application this evening. As you know, I'm Tina Hubert. I've lived in Galt 27 years. Both my kids have graduated from Galt High School. I am currently the executive assistant in the administration department. As far as my experience for city clerk, I am a certified municipal clerk. I have been filling in as acting city clerk on an as-needed basis. I do, am familiar with Roberts, Rosenberg's Rules of Order and the Brown Act, and I am familiar with the posting and publication requirements for resolutions, ordinances after adoption. And again, I'd like to thank you, and can I answer any questions?
Tina, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One thing, you know, I'm talking about, you are an administrative clerk, and you're applying the job for city clerk.
Yes.
And realize that city clerk job is a little bit different than the administrative job, that will be a more independent job.
Correct.
How you can describe us, you know, the job you applying, how you organize your plan and more prioritize your work?
For?
If you appointed, if you appointed as a city clerk.
How I prioritize?
Yes.
Well, executive assistant, working for city manager and the city clerk administrator, those, if something needs to be done, that is obviously first priority. But I know city council meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month, so we have an internal calendar we go by, and we have a calendar when agenda reports are due, we follow that calendar. So, city clerk is very, on a very strict timeline, so that is always priority over anything else when it is coming up.
Okay, thank you. And the other question I'm asking on that, because the city clerk, a job description, or you can be, end up having independent make the decision. Like, for example, share me any example of time you had gathering all the information from a different department, like, or the community, you getting information from this department, you getting the information from the newspaper, you getting information from the Facebook, right? How you can, how you determine this information be relevant, sometimes you don't have no help from the other people, and how you can come over that? How much confidence you have to make an independent decision, some of the tasks you can have in future? Did you understand it?
I'm sorry, can you, how am I going to?
How you can be, make the decision, what could, you can use your, you know, review and whatever information to what you're going to have if you don't have no help? Because right now, you are assistant, you can go to your boss, you can get the information, right? And city clerk, a lot of times, they get the information themselves. So you have the ability, for example, you already have a certified municipal clerk, it can give you the opportunity, how you do that job. And you also know the Brown Act.
Mm-hmm.
And that also can help you to do your job. So you have that qualification in order to do the job. That's why I'm asking, you already have it. All right, that's my-
Is there a question I can answer for you, or?
No, actually-
Okay, okay.
I'll give you the answer.
Thanks. I appreciate that.
No, I'm talking about this kind of qualification you already have while you was working as an administrator to become a city clerk, and you have that experience. So I know the city clerk's qualification is very minimum, but we always looking have a little bit more experience than if we appoint somebody.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Is there a certification higher than certified municipal clerk?
There is an MMC, which is Masters Municipal Clerk, that you can also achieve through education and-
Are all city clerks, do all city clerks in California, to your knowledge, have the CMC, or how many? Any idea?
That I'm not sure of. It depends, every city is different, it depends on if they're elected, appointed.
Okay.
Like, we have a city clerk and a clerk administrator, it just all depends how their city has formed that position. And usually, if a city clerk is part of a appointed position where they're in charge of, you know, elections, the FPPC rules, they do have their CMC.
CMC. We have, there's no, the minimum qualification is simply being a registered voter and a resident of the community.
And 18 years of age, right?
We can't, yes.
I don't know if I've hit that yet.
Well, a minimum of an 18. You don't have to be 18, but a minimum of 18 years.
I'm satisfied.
I don't have any questions. I think we've covered, or council members have covered, the questions that I kind of had in my mind. I appreciate you. I understand CMC is not something you just roll out of bed one day and go down and get. You know, it takes time to go through that process, and I appreciate that you've taken the initiative to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, so unless, well, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for appointing.
Thank you. Thank you for approaching the fireman squad, I guess. And do we need to make a motion? Does anybody want?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Christina Hubert to the elected city clerk.
A second then.
All right, we have a motion by councilmember Lozano, seconded by councilmember Campion. Any more discussion of that? All right, roll call vote. Was that a point? You went like that? You have to, okay. Go ahead. Councilmember Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yes.
And Mayor Lamson? Yes. Motion passes 4-0.
I would note that we did leave you the option on the agenda to swear in Ms. Hubert, if you're so inclined.
Oh.
And Settles can still do that, as her-
Sure, let's do that.
Do we turn on the lights?
Yeah. In the dark. Shall I tell you the lights, and turn the lights on? This is probably the background. Smile. You can use mine, you can turn mine around. Okay, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, I instate your name.
I, Tina Hubert.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And during such time.
And during such time.
As I am.
As I am.
An appointed official.
An appointed official.
Of the city of Galt.
Of the city of Galt.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of city clerk.
Of the position of city clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Great, congratulations. Is there a question?
Well, if you want to finish, we might drag this one out till-
What?
We might drag this one out a couple hours here. All right. Next up, Finance Department, approval of new classification and salary range for account 1, 2, approval of new and revised specification for accounting manager and budget revenue manager.
I'm going to defer to our interim HR director, who provided this? We can do it jointly. Good evening, Mayor Lamson and council members. What you have before you is a, what is referred to as commonly a classification plan. In HR world, what that means, it's a list of class specifications, or in other words, a job description, and in the city service, every job has a class specification for it. What we're looking at doing, requesting you to do tonight, is to amend the current classification plan, that is, the list of all the job descriptions in the city, to include the addition of an accountant position. That's attached for your review, accountant 1 and 2, to better meet the needs of the finance department. I want to emphasize that the classification plan is different from a job allocation plan. A job allocation plan is the number of budgeted positions. We are not requesting any change to the number of budgeted positions. What we're requesting is a change or amendment to the classification plan, which simply means the addition of this job description, accountant 1 and 2, along with a salary range, be included in the classification plan. The other attached job descriptions are revisions to existing jobs, and we're asking you to include those. They've been updated to reflect the current duties of the positions. And with that, I leave any questions you have.
Mayor Lamson, if I could just add a couple quick comments. This was part of the city's cost reduction plan. As the council may recall, we froze the position of financial analyst in the finance department in favor of reallocating the position of accounting assistant to accountant. And so Ms. Narlock has identified for you that requires the adoption of a class specification or job description that outlines those duties. This comes to us as a result of past management studies that have been conducted, independently conducted for the finance department, that indicates that we have a lack of actual accountant level experience in the department. And so when I was going through the effort to identify for the council the proposed cost reductions that we would be incurring, and a number of those included positions that were frozen, this was a position that we called out, the accountant position, we called out for being elevated from an existing but vacant accounting assistant position. So the estimated budget impact for the remainder of this fiscal year is about $6,600. That's a, will be an additional impact, but that was accounted for in the overall finance department proposal, which, through the freezing of the financial analyst position, amongst other things, will save approximately $112,443 in the finance department. But we are recognizing the previous management study, comments by our auditors in the past indicating that the department would be well-served by having an accountant-level position in the department. And so those would be my comments. We'd be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
So currently, how many accountants or people with accounting certifications do we have?
We have one accounting manager.
One, okay, so this would give us another one with, this would give us another one with accounting expertise, and our auditors recommended, recommended that?
Yes.
Interesting. Okay. Anybody else?
I just have one quick question, and it has more to do with the budget reduction process, and general, or city manager and I had this conversation today. If we were not to do this, and I understand the need for it, I understand, I thank you for looking at what the independent auditor has said and kind of taking their advice on it. But had we not had the impact of the $6,600, well, I guess my question is, was that in the budget already?
Yes, we're not asking for an additional allocation.
Okay.
So sufficient funds are in the budget based on the cost reduction plan to accommodate for this.
Okay.
What we're just calling out is essentially, part of what remains in the finance department budget is the additional $6,600, if you will, in order to bring this about. So we couldn't do everything at once the night that the council adopted the cost reduction plan. There are some things that will follow on, and this is one of those items that is following on for enactment now, consistent with the budget reductions that the council approved.
Okay, thank you, that's all I-
You know, Tom, follow up on that question, you know, the cost reduction plan, I'm talking about these costs, $6,600 you never mentioned in that plan, in particularly because we're going to freeze that one position as analyst, and we're going to, as you know, upgrade the other position. I don't know, I might have been mistaken, I never heard on that cost reduction plan. I might have heard it a different way, can you explain to?
Right, I think, and I think that that's just it, you heard it a different way. The, so the, under the cost reduction plan in finance, one of the items that we specifically called out, and it's in the, if you look at that chart, if you were to go back and look at the chart that we called out, it was to freeze the financial analyst position and reallocate the accounting assistant to accountant. And so that was called out in that chart. And so then, next to that was, what are the overall savings that those actions would result in? And it was $112,443 cost reduction. And so the combination of freezing the financial analyst and reallocating accounting assistant to accountant results in that $112,000-plus savings.
Thank you.
This would be one of those items, like we talked about, there were certain items that we could take care of that night.
Right.
Then there would be follow-up items that require time in order to, one, I guess, put together the job descriptions here, come back, present it to council for final action. So this is, merely implements what you had included during those budget reductions.
That's correct. This is a follow-on implementing staff report regarding the cost reduction plan that the council adopted.
All right, any other discussion?
I just have one more comment. I suspect that over the next several months, that we'll probably have an opportunity to weigh in on the cost reduction plan that we implemented last month as it relates to items coming back. And I think that part of that, at least from my perspective, is working on ways to be more efficient in our departments, working with our staff, to determine how to do that. And so I suspect this won't be the last that we hear of something that we could, we could do, even outside of the cost reduction plan, but an efficiency, more midterm, in a midterm range, to address some of these concerns. So I appreciate the work that staff put together on this, specifically from the human resource perspective, because that's a lot of, a lot of work to put together, and thank you to the finance director for being creative, so, thanks.
All right, any other discussion? All right. Can I get a motion to adopt a resolution amending the classification plan and salary schedule by approving the proposed job specification and salary range for the classification of accountant 1/2, and that a currently vacant accounting assistant 1/2 position be reallocated to an accountant 1/2 and 2? position be reallocated to an Accountant One slash Two and Two, approving revisions to the job title and specifications for Accounting Manager and Budget Revenue Manager?
So move.
Move by Councilmember Campion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Lozano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sandu?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Hi.
Councilmember Lozano?
Yes.
Mayor Lamson?
I. Motion passes four zero. I don't see any communication.
No.
And City Clerk's report?
I have nothing tonight, thank you. Not goodbye.
No speech? Okay, this was your chance. Comments by staff? Ms. Tyson?
I have one item to report. The city just received today their certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting relative to our comprehensive annual report from last year. This is an award given to us by the Government Finance Officers Association, and we are very proud of our lean and mean staff to have earned this. Thank you.
Congratulations. Mr. Sully?
Yeah, two things. First off, just to kind of dovetail on Councilmember Lozano's recognition of the upcoming unmet transit needs, it's going to be at 2:00 PM here in the City Council chambers on October 30th, and basically, it's a chance for anybody who has a need, you know, whether it's to use a bus, or dial a ride, or whatever service to somewhere, to come and express that need, and then they will evaluate it, whether it's cost-effective, or what the ridership would be, things like that. So just want to encourage folks that that opportunity is there, and there will be Spanish translation provided as well. And then, while I'm the short timer here, I just want to recognize Ms. Settles in the short time I've been here, and she's been great to work with, and I think we'll definitely miss her. And also congratulate Ms. Hubert for her stepping up and taking on the mantle.
Thank you. Mr. Arias?
Yes, real quick, good news. I did receive verbal notification that we were successful in receiving the SB2 planning grant.
Nice.
And that, Mr. Corliss spoke about that in his presentation. That is part of the planning funding they had available, or the state had available to help spur housing. So the bad news part of that is, based on some of the RENA numbers that we have been looking at, I don't believe some of the rezones and land use changes that I had presented as part of the request to go for that grant was sufficient to meet some of our needs and our upcoming housing element. So I'm going to expect us to be a little bit more aggressive and looking for high-density sites in the city. So, once we get formal notification of the grant award, we'll then start our process of moving forward with that cleanup of the zoning code and rezones and general plan amendment.
Thank you. Ms. Narlock, anything else?
We have a police dispatcher opening at this point in time, so we're conducting a recruitment for that, and we just finished a month-long period of time by which we had open enrollment for health insurance to allow employees to make changes to their plans. That's it.
All right, thank you. Ms. Hubert? I'd like to thank the City Council for the appointment this evening. I truly appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. Director Solis?
Yes, if you look up on the board here, the Galt Market will be hosting a movie night this Saturday at Veterans Field. We'll be showing Hotel Transylvania III. It starts at dusk, about 5:30. Movie should start approximately 7:00 PM. There'll be trick-or-treating for the kids. The Galt Chamber is bringing out some of their members, so it'll be a pretty good event. And I just wanted to piggyback on Mr. Davenport's words, I kind of like you too, Settles, and congratulations, Tina.
Chief Sockman?
Nothing from the Police Department. Donna, I'm going to miss you. I love our conversations and our battles and our, everything else that we go through. Quite honestly, you've made this place extremely fun to work, and so I'll see you around town, I guess.
I'll be here.
That's different than what you said earlier, but.
Mr. Haglund?
Two things, two quick, actually, three things. Wanted to just let the council know, if you don't know already, I'm sure you do, that we have been holding a couple of presentations on the Galt Market Community Plan by way of introducing that to both the public and two of our commissions thus far, the Parks and Rec Commission and the Planning Commission. And really, the intent of that presentation is to facilitate some public promotion and introduce the Galt Market Community Plan process, which the firm of Williams and Patton will be assisting the city in undertaking. That is going to be a completely public process. There are no preconceived notions or ideas. I described it the other night, we have a map with different colors. I said, we are no further than color crayons on a piece of paper at this point in just recognizing that as the revenues of our flea market continue their 15-year decline, that it is important for the city to get ahead of the game and undertake some sort of visioning and planning process, whether or not that ultimately produces anything different than what we have now, or whether it does. It's important that we start before the revenues have declined so much that now expenses exceed them, and we didn't parlay our market and the associated lands into something that can continue to generate revenue for Parks and Recreation. So, again, been introducing that concept both to the commissions and to the public. We've received some public comment from people in attendance at those meetings. We have a number of other meetings to, again, further that introduction to our community, and, again, ideally, encourage all of the residents who want to participate in that process to come out, to be a part, to be a voice, to have a voice in what happens, if anything, to this area as we try to transition the market into a more stable source of revenue for our Parks and Recreation programs and maintenance of our parks. And then finally, I would like to congratulate Donna on her pending retirement. She still has some days to clock, and I'll be watching that. But the, I want to thank you for your assistance that you've provided me during my tenure here as the interim City Manager, and for your service to the community. And I want to congratulate Tina for being appointed the city clerk, and thank you for all the help and assistance you've provided me thus far.
And before you move on, I just wanted to point out on the city's website, on the homepage, if you click on the picture, the Galt Market Community Plan, it will show you all the information thus far that's been shared with the community, and also the other upcoming meetings that are coming as well. It's very.
And Donna put that up a couple weeks ago, so it's been up there for.
Thank you. Tagging on that, in all your vast experience and working with the City of Galt, this is going to happen next year? How, people think it's going to happen really fast. How, how many years do you think it's going to take before anything happens?
Well, we have a timeline with the Community Master Plan, and I can't quite recall that, Chris, is it about a year?
Yeah, the planning process itself will take about a year. So, once the plan is complete, actual construction can take years after that. So, this is not a fast process, but it's really an important and exciting one. And, you know, I just want to piggyback on what was said about inviting the public to come out, because this is really an exciting opportunity to help shape a really important part of the community. And Mr. Corliss actually spoke about how cities have to redesign sites and really prioritize infill and make those exciting areas in the city and make them vibrant, and I think that was perfect timing for what we do. That's exactly the type of stuff that we're thinking for the Market Master Plan. But again, as the City Manager indicated, there is no, it's a blank palette at this point. We have no preconceived notions of what that will ultimately look like.
You saw that mall in the SAGCOG presentation that was closed down. We don't want that to happen to the Galt Market. We don't want to lose that income stream, and so, right now, we're on a mission to bolster it, to figure out ways to enhance it, and ideally, make it less subject to the whims, you know, financing for Parks and Recreation, less subject to the whims of the economy.
Thank you. Ms. Hitt?
Well, the governor's been busy. We had the deadline for the governor to sign or veto bills, so that has just passed, and so we're going through all those, and we'll be following up with the report. But you heard Mr. Arias note that the housing element is coming up, and that was a big theme and an important issue for the governor this year. There was Housing Crisis Act of 2020, and a lot of the bills are focused on housing. So we will be coming back with more information on some of the key legislation, and also thank you to Donna. It's been great. We will be missed, and congratulations to Tina.
All right. Councilmember Campion?
I have nothing to report. Donna, it was a pleasure working with you when I worked for the city, and it's been a pleasure working with you as a member of council. I wish you well in your retirement. I think you should probably stay on, though.
Until October 31st.
That's all you can get.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lozano?
Yeah, in the interest of not being repetitive, I just want to mention that I did go to the planning.
I'm not sure I understand. Smart watch.
It's this smart watch thing that my kids got me. I'm not very smart. Anyhow, so I did go to the Planning Commission meeting the other night and heard the presentation on the Galt Market, and the only thing I want to say to that is, as one member of council, I think if we don't look at everything, we're not doing our taxpayers any service. And so I agree that we need to do something, because doing nothing will get us to less and less revenue. So, at least at some point, the important piece for me is, is that the community, and I said this, you know, 10 months ago when we got on council, that the community have input, and that's what's going to drive what happens there. So whether it's the, you know, the citizens or the businesses, all of the stakeholders that are involved, they need to be a part of this. So what Mr. Haglund said about getting out and being a part of the conversation is really, really important. And so I like the idea of a blank slate. You know, it's just, if we, if we can get, if we can get somewhere with the process, with the citizens, I think that'll be important to the future of the market. And then the other thing is, is congratulations to Ms. Settles on her retirement. We're going to miss you, and congratulations also to Tina for your appointment.
Councilmember Sandu?
Yeah, a few things. First, Donna, thank you for your service, and thank for your, you know, it's a good luck for your retirement. Congratulations, Tina, and we hoping you will be the same level of service to the community and the councils and the staff. The other thing, I also, same thing, I don't want to, you know, repeat again, I also attended that Park and Recreation Commission meeting last week, and there was a discussion with Galt Market Master Plan, and same thing, I like, I was looking at the reason I come to the meeting, I just want to see what the public said, or what the staff said. I thank you for Tom, he was a very good explain what's the master plan, and same thing, staff. So there was a public comment, and my personally, I'm looking at everything to, this is a big project for the city. And I also joined the, with the Galt Chamber of Commerce to recognize Business of the Month, Buchanan Auto Glass. Thank you for them, and thank you for the chamber. Thanks, that's it.
Thank you. Forgot to mention, we had a youth commission meeting, and the youth have a lot of things planned, and it's quite a different group we have this year. They're, they're a little bit more vocal, a little bit more active, and it's kind of fun. I got to speak, I was asked to come speak to the Lake Canyon students who are doing a government section and kind of explain what local government is and what the duties of the mayor are. They thought I got paid $100,000 a year, which would be nice, anyway, so that was nice, talking to them about what really goes on. I also got to speak to the Boy Scouts about the same thing, and some of, one of their issues is litter, and so they're concerned about the litter around town, and if we can get the kids concerned, I think we'll have some impact on that. So, that was really good. And want to say congratulations to Donna. Some people have mentioned to me that you're probably not old enough to retire, but, so that's, take that as a compliment.
You're not, you're my new favorite.
Thank you. And I'm not sure it's congratulations, Tina, but well, and we appreciate you, your willingness to take on these meetings. All right. And with that, meeting adjourned.